I will call to order the work session in the Willson City Council for May 5, 2025, at 5:00 PM.
Can you see the lights flash?
I saw the flash.
Okay.
Shall I rewind that? Okay, well, I'm going to go with the flow here. I will start by asking council members for review of agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Okay. Are there any councilor concerns before we start our work session? Okay. Let's now move to the pre-council work session agenda. First up is community enhancement program.
I am Zoe Monburt, Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm the staff liaison to the Community Enhancement Committee. This evening, I am here to discuss the community enhancement program as well as the recommended allocations for the upcoming fiscal year. So for council members or folks in the audience that are not familiar with the program, this program has been operating in Wilsonville for about 10 years, and there are two main funding sources, the community enhancement fee and the community investment fee. The community enhancement fee is funded through a $1 for every one ton of wet waste fee that is charged through public services and then goes through Metro to the city of Wilsonville. And the community investment fee is optional, part of an optional program that Metro also has, and that program or those funds are now funneled through this program as well. They generally come in at about 50% of the community enhancement funds. We're generally seeing somewhere between $70,000 and $80,000 a year coming in for the community enhancement fund, and about, I think it's been close to 35 would be the average in the community investment program. Over the life of this program, we have allocated funds to 47 projects. This should actually be 36 projects are completed, as the Hartz project, the Many Cultures One Heart was funded by this project, so six are currently in project. We have had four projects that were allocated funds, however, they were never completed. The majority of these projects are run by the city. When the program originally started, we had a number of applications from the community that would get awarded, and then staff would manage the project. Over time, we've tried to scope the projects a little bit more thoroughly, budget them more thoroughly, so this has become staff pulling projects from master plans or community input if they are applying. And then we've had a number of different nonprofits that have been awarded funds over the years. There are a few requirements that applicants need to meet. Located within the city of Wilsonville, that is the project boundary. They have to be local government or a local government committee, generally that's the city of Wilsonville, a school or nonprofit. They need to meet one program goal, which we'll look at in just a moment. They need to have a one-year timeline. So according to our intergovernmental agreement with Metro, all projects must be completed within two years. And when we had a two-year timeline, we had a number of projects that were starting to go over because projects were being delayed, something was coming up. So we've changed this to a one-year program with one-year extension, which has helped us really rein in these projects and make sure that we're actually completing them. It also cannot replace other funding sources. This small list, they're small font, so there's nine program goals. The first eight of them are specifically from our agreement with Metro, and the last one, foster and enhance community enrichment through educational programming, arts and cultural projects. This is a brand-new goal that the committee added this year, however, we did not have any applicants. So many times, we'll see programs that meet a few of these, but sometimes it's just meeting one goal, which is just fine. There are other considerations. So as a part of this program, the, and we'll go over the timeline in just a moment, as a part of the project, staff will review the applications, and they'll look at the scope of the project, is this reasonable, does it appear that they could actually do what they're requesting to do within the budget, is the project ready to go? Sometimes these projects require coordination with different groups, or they require permits, permits, and coordination generally take time, and they sometimes increase costs. There's also looking at the capacity to manage the project. So if it's staff, does this fit within their workload? And if it's a nonprofit agency, is this something that they can do on top of their other projects as well as community benefit? So these, all the projects you'll see this evening do meet the community benefit. This is the timeline we followed this year. We advertise these programs in the Boonsbury Messenger through social media and try to receive as many applications as possible. That's something that the committee and this program has struggled with over time. The application, the original application period went through, I believe it was January 18th, however, we did not receive any applications. So we extended it through March 3 and received six applications. Five of those applications were forwarded to the committee. One project had some challenges related to the budget scope and readiness. And with that, they, the committee, the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee unanimously recommended these five, these five projects on the screen. The Charbonneau Community Foundation French Prairie Road project, these are improvements to a few corners for safety and beautification. The Natural Resources Department has a Community Wildlife Connections project. So over the past few years, they have worked with a consultant to not only install cameras, but also monitor those cameras to have a sense of what kind of wildlife we have in the community. Through this project, there was discussion about ensuring that this is publicized a little bit better to make sure the annual port is easily accessible to community members so people can really learn about the different wildlife we have here. This is less than they've asked for in past years because there's no need for additional cameras, just the maintenance of those cameras and the contract. The Parks Department Memorial Wayfinding Project, their original application was around $40,000, however, as we looked a little bit further through the staff review, found that there was funds available for wayfinding that wasn't allocated. So those funds were then added as a match to this project, and then they did a little bit more scoping and found they could reduce it slightly again. So these would be wayfinding for different trails in Memorial Park with some sort of signage that meets all of our other standards, but also tells people where they, where they can go and how long they can expect these trails to be. The Heart of the City also asked for some security improvements, including removal of trees, replacement of those trees per the code, and security cameras and some lighting to ensure that there's more visibility on their property. And then Wilsonville Community Sharing will be relocating to the new transit-oriented development site at the West Station, and there are costs associated with that. So they need furniture as well as the ability to move. So that's what this request was for. And those were the five projects that the Wilsonville Community Enhancement Committee unanimously recommended. I will note that there are two councilors that sit on that committee, Council President Barry and Councilor Chevlin. We also have four community members. Metro Councilor Rosenthal also sits on that committee, however, he was unable to participate this year. So with that, these are the projects that are recommended, and they're scheduled to come to you at the next meeting, but wanted to make sure you had all the information in front of you first.
I just have a question. Assuming that these projects come under budget, which is highly unlikely in the world we live in, does that mean that, how does that work?
So this is a reimbursement program. So we do work with nonprofits to make sure that they are getting reimbursed in a timely and regular manner, because they have to put a little bit of money out first. But if the, so let's use Charbonneau because that's an easy round number, if they spent $5,000 instead of $10,000, $5,000 would still be available. It's generally a year or two out because we, we look at the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and we don't always know what the outcome or when the final date and spending will be for those other projects. So the projects that are being worked on for this fiscal year still have until the end of June to finish. So if, for example, Heart of the City has an existing grant right now, so they're going to finish that grant, we don't know what it's coming in at yet, before they start their, their new one.
You could view it as a not-to-exceed.
Right, so these are ceilings, essentially.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's another good point. If someone comes in over budget, we don't have the opportunity to provide them with more funds. So everything has to go through the grant process and be approved by the city council.
Thank you. Another question.
Thank you for your presentation, so I thought it was really thorough. So in your, the beginning, did you say that initially there were no applications, and then later we pushed out the date? Did we do different type of advertising or more outreach, or what happened?
I think we did the same type of outreach, and I should have mentioned, we have a list of nonprofits, so we send a letter as well as emails out to nonprofits in the community. It could have been that the committee members started reaching out, so I'm not sure how exactly it came to be. We did reach out to Community Sharing because they hadn't been an applicant before, but other than that, I believe it's been timing. I also heard that the time of year around the holidays maybe isn't the best timing for seeking applications. That might be something the committee can look at in the future.
And then I just wanted to add a comment. I've, I've really liked that there's a variety of different projects that were accepted by the committee, you know, one over by Charbonneau, doing some landscaping, the Wildlife Connections, the Wayfairing project, and then the Heart of the City Security and the Wilsonville Sharing, helping them with their move. I just think that's a really nice balance, so thank you.
Just a quick comment. The inclusion of both Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City. I spoke with Lynn Welchel on Saturday at the mental health fair, and she was extremely pleased to see that this was fully funded per the ask. And yeah, I just want to point out to the other councilors, and I know that they're all aware of this, that both Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City, when we are assisting them through these grants, it has a direct benefit to our neediest members of our population, whether it's through security or relocation or whatever, in that as a city, we must always pay close attention to all of them. So really appreciate that the committee, you know, chose to fund them to the level that they did.
Any comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So in this capacity, I also serve as the staff liaison to the Tourism Promotion Committee. So this evening, we're going to be talking about the Tourism Promotion and Marketing Services Contract, which is in your packet this evening under consent. So I'm going to provide you with a quick, high-level overview. I know we talked about tourism a lot as you were reviewing the new tourism development strategy, but again, to provide a little bit of background and then walk you through the process we go through for our contract. So this is a high-level look at our tourism development program. We receive transient lodging tax from the state because we have properties in our town, hotel properties, and with that funding, we are required to use a certain percentage towards marketing to potential visitors from 50 miles or more away. So with that, we started our original strategy in 2014, as you'll recall from the last strategy, which was, or the new strategy, which you just adopted last month. And our original, original marketing plan and consultant, we brought them on board in 2018. Through another RFP process, we hired J-Ray in 2019, and their contract began in January 2020. We'll look at a little timeline in a moment of the work that they've done for us, but it has changed quite a bit over the last five years. Additionally, we come to council, we, the staff will bring forward a one-year implementation year, five-year action plan that the Tourism Promotion Committee, that has seven voting community members or volunteers. They will prepare the plan, look at the tourism development strategy, and identify what the focus is going to be for the upcoming year, and then that comes to council for adoption on an annual basis. This year, we had a request for proposal for a marketing and promotion services contract of $200,000 a year. This is pretty consistent. We have gone back and forth between $150,000 and $200,000. Mostly that's been because of the pandemic. Again, you'll see in a moment, we had to drop down what we were spending for a period of time because there wasn't much travel. This marketing contract focuses on essentially everything we do for Explore Wilsonville. So our website, social media, content creation, that is done based on the direction provided by the Tourism Committee and with staff's involvement in regular check-ins and reviewing all content before it goes out. The RFP that went out was for a three-year contract with two optional one-year extension. The previous contract that we had had was a one-year contract with two one-year extensions, and in this case, it seemed reasonable to go ahead and move forward with a longer-term contract. So the process we went through is our standard process. So we published a request for proposal on February 3 on the city's bids page. We also put this in the Daily Journal of Commerce. We received five responses by March, the March 3 deadline. These responses varied in where they came from. We had California, Colorado, Washington, Oregon, and Canada that responded. The Tourism Promotion Committee reviewed all five of the applications at their March 19 meeting and decided to advance the top two finalists to an interview that they conducted on April 2. At that April 2 meeting, the committee unanimously recommended that the city enter a new contract with J-Ray, which is our current consultant. Based on their knowledge and experience with small destinations, they specifically proposed a local campaign, which is consistent with our new tourism development strategy, Strategy 1.16. And this specific strategy is focusing on increasing the visibility of Explore Wilsonville in our community as well as with our partners. The committee has been pretty happy with the work that J-Ray has done over the past five years. This is just a snapshot of where we've been. So this takes you back to 2020 when we started our contract, and you can see the immediate reduction in our budget. So we focused on how do we promote some sort of tourism when we're allowed to? So we went back and forth with the mandates, we had a massed-up photo shoot, we then worked on looking at how we update our itineraries. That's been a major focus for us. When the original marketing plan came out in 2018, it was called Pocket Trips. So there were these cute little cards that you could put in your pocket and take with you. So we've evolved our strategy to staying in the heart of it all, and we promote Wilsonville as the place that you should stay, and then explore in and around Wilsonville. So we promote all things in Aurora, Butteville, a lot of the farms nearby, that's been pretty popular. So we've also updated our brand, so the little Explore Wilsonville there, you'll see a larger picture in a moment. That was updated, we've refreshed our brochures, and then we also started some marketing with geofencing, so we look at specific areas and monitor where our visitors are going so that we can target those ads and target our strategy. And then finally, we've gotten to a point where they have worked with us to build our new strategy, so the tourism development strategy that was just adopted. This is a snapshot of some of the, the work they've done and the progress that we've seen with not only our website, but also social media. We've started using content creators or influencers that they work with and build partnerships in order to move that forward. We've also been building, our consultants on our behalf have been building relationships to have more articles about Explore Wilsonville, and recently, we had some earned media as well. So everyone loves goats. Our Farmlandia Tours are pretty popular, so this is one of the banners that's on our Explore Wilsonville page right now, so this gives you an idea of what people see when they get to our website. These are a few snapshots of our Pinterest, as well as a reel that we had a content creator here last week, and they've posted from their visit to Frog Pond Farms. So the reason I provided this little Pinterest, it doesn't come up super clear on your screen, but gives you an idea of what areas we focus on for our itinerary, so shopping, so tax-free shopping, arts and culture, family fun, and different outdoorsy trips, history and heritage. So these are areas that we generally focus on with our itineraries and with our consultants' help, we've been able to take some of the content we create and then mix and match so that we're able to reuse content here and there. They've also worked with us to elevate the types of content creators that we've been able to bring. In April, we had Downs and Towns Visit. This was a partnership between Explore Wilsonville and Oregon Mount Hoods Territory, which is Clackamas County. So with the partnership, we were able to bring them here, which is something that we could not have done independently. So with that, that's a highlight of the work that we do with our marketing and the process we went through and where we're hoping to go with the updated contract. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I actually have a comment, and I did make Zoe aware that I was, I'm going to ask that we remove this from consent agenda this evening. I have a concern with the two-year extension of the contract. I want to see us look a little more closely, more closely at the performance of the data on the digital advertising side, because all of the social media is great, but unless it is actually promoted in some of these third parties, and digital is moving so quickly. I also know from my experience on the digital media side, especially with agencies, is they can become fatigued. And I just, I, I know, I, I trust the process. I trust everything that you all have gone through to get us there, but I think that we have several variables. We have, I would like to take a deeper dive, and thank you, Zoe, for sending me some of that additional data. That helped me out quite a bit with looking at the performance beyond the VCR. Given the fact that we are also in a period of change, our new city manager, unless you change your mind, decide to stay. Our new city manager may want to revisit who the digital camp, the digital partner is. So I would just ask, I can obviously be voted against, but I would ask that we back that off, present it as one year.
Sure, but we'll put it under the new business tonight. Who's on the committee that you can help me with that?
I should have them all memorized. So Brandon Robin is our chair. He is the CEO of Oaks Amusement Park and is our longest-standing member, lives in the community. Sungman Park is the owner of the Holiday Inn in town. Noel Craddock is the owner of Our Sweet Retreat. They are the 100% VRBO on Wilsonville Road. It's a cute little white house that you drive by on your way to the elementary school. Jennifer Gage used to be the manager of Bellas. Libby Crawford has a background in marketing and used to work in the cruise industry. Rohi Sharma had been on the committee, and then his new general manager, we're working with Hilton to see if there might be interest in having them join the committee again. There should be seven. I'm forgetting somebody. Oh, Elaine Owen, she is the owner of Lady Hill Winery.
Okay, and they recommended this contract, this selection?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
That's a, that's a, a point that I'd like to take into consideration, but I also sat in on the committee meetings, and it was pretty much unanimous that J-Ray be selected based on their knowledge and their experience with the city of Wilsonville, and that the committee felt that they were doing a good job and that they were going to be able to build on what they've already done.
Let me be clear, counselor, I'm not asking that they, we not approve the contract, I'm asking that it be just a one-year term, and that we can revisit it in next year. And that with the option to extend it, and maybe that's some clarification for me, that if we have the option to extend, I just don't want to be locked into a three-year contract.
So the current, the current resolution and the current recommended contract is a three-year contract with two years of extension, and I would lean to the city attorney on any changes.
Do you have a recommendation through Tourism Promotion for this? So if you want to change it, you would have to give some direction back to staff as to unwind, if somebody's name, we don't know how the rest of the council feels. So when we get to that conversation tonight, we'll hear what you have to say, and then we can. Good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next up on the work session, French Prairie Road Pedestrian Plan Project Update.
Zoe, you set a high bar on transition. Thank you. All right. Thank you, my name's, oh, sorry.
There's your process for everything.
Okay, good to know.
My face is probably new to most of you, except for Counselor Chevlin. I worked for the city from 2012 to 2019, and then came back to assist with some of the engineering projects during COVID, and just a few projects have continued to allow me to continue to work part-time for the city under Zach. And one of the projects that he has allowed me to work on, because I really, I love this work, so I'm happy to be back, is the French Prairie Road Pathway Improvements Project. So we're here tonight just to give you an update on what we've done so far. And again, I'm Nancy Crashar, this is, well, that's Zach Ligel back there, you know him. And this is David Brokop. He is the engineer who is the head of the consulting engineering team for the project. So we'll move forward with that.
All right. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, now Dave will take over.
Thank you, Nancy. So just a little bit of an overview of the project to date. So the reason why we're here tonight, the neighborhood, Charbonneau District submitted a petition to council in November 2023, asking for some kind of accommodation for bikes and pets, a continuous pathway within the community. The current pathway that they have is, is very limited. It's, it's only about three-quarters of the way around French Prairie. It's in various states of disrepair. It does not have compliant ADA, Americans with Disability Act compliant. It does not have compliant ADA, Americans with Disability Act compliant, widths nor slopes, nor cross slopes. And it's just a problem for a lot of users. It's, it's being pushed out of compliance by tree roots and tripping hazards and the like. You want to go ahead to the next one?
Sure.
So what we're trying to do here with the project is try to address the petitioner's concerns, provide them with some kind of a solution to accommodate all users within the community. As, as part of what we're trying to build here, we want to get community support behind the project, and this is intended to be a community-led design effort with the ultimate goal of finding a preferred solution that addresses most of the needs of the community. There is going to be some challenges associated with differences of opinion with regard to how the road is used and impacts to the community. So we're trying to balance those goals to, to provide the best solution we can find.
I might add, we're also trying to, we're, we're developing alternatives that we're also looking at the cost estimates of them so that the community can understand what's achievable within an acceptable timeframe.
So starting with public engagement, we've had a very, from my perspective, a very robust outreach efforts to date, starting with like a listening phase of this project. The city has put out through their Let's Talk Wilsonville platform, a survey, GIS locating of, of issues of concern within the community. Charbonneau Country Club also reached out to their community and got a lot of feedback. We've had over 400 unique submissions to the project. We followed that up with a fireside chat event last, just in March here, and we had over 100 people attending. So a lot of interest and excitement from the community to come out. Following on that, we, we got in touch with the, the, the business community within Charbonneau, and we had a separate individual meeting with them to kind of understand their concerns and how they use French Prairie, and what impacts any project that we desire to put forward would have to their, their businesses. And it's, like, all rounding that out, we developed a public engagement plan to figure out how we're going to take this information, turn it into a plan, and ultimately land on a preferred alternative that we can submit and become a capital improvement project for the city.
We want to acknowledge Charbonneau community, especially the Country Club Board. They've been really helpful. For one thing, they, they did their own survey, which was fabulous, and we had 270, 290 responses just to that survey. And then they also were very helpful in planning this fireside chat. They, they're, they're great communicators, and so we're really happy to have them on our team.
No doubt.
There we go.
So from the survey, we did a little analysis to find out, you know, what is the big drivers of the community. As far as like the most mentioned things, the existing pathway had a lot of trip hazards and uneven surfaces. The community has a lot of, of senior citizens within it that were very concerned about how that might affect them, concerns for their safety walking on that path. Also, they're very concerned about, right now, because people can't walk on the path or there's no path in certain segments, a lot of the community is walking within the street. And so there's concerns for the safety of the people within the streets and the conflict between pedestrians and vehicles. There's additional concerns for safety, including speeding and lack of enforcement, as well as crossing locations and safety at the intersections, crosswalks and lighting.
And I think, I'd like to just add that when we're talking about for all users, it's, we have a lot of users out there. We've got people. We also have service trucks that do all the landscape maintenance out there. We have to think about emergency services. And of the people, there are folks that are walking, there are folks that are pushing strollers, there are people that are riding e-bikes these days, and so there's bicycles, pedestrians. It's, it's, it's a very kind of a complicated group of folks that we're trying to address with these providing the pathway. And we have all ages, so we want to make sure that we're respecting as many needs as we possibly can.
So from this, the, what we determined to be the highest priority within the community, first and foremost, getting a continuous pathway all the way around French Prairie Road from miley to miley, looking at the surface conditions and addressing the safety concerns of people who want to walk in the neighborhood, and making sure that whatever is provided is accessible to all users. With regard to our scope, the first thing we, we wanted to do is address and identify the existing pathway and how it, whether or not it's ADA compliant. I can tell you, it's, it's very much not compliant. From that, as well as the, the listening phase and the outreach to the community, we're going to develop some design alternatives. That's the part where we're at. To date, we're looking at a variety of different alternatives, including some that may look, you know, one segment might be this and one segment might be that. So it might be different in different locations within French Prairie Road. And then from the alternatives that we develop, we're going to look at and evaluate them on trees, slopes, making sure that we don't impact some of the community assets. Trees are very valuable within this community, making sure that whatever we provide is, is safe, has adequate lighting, provides maintenance access, as well as like unloading and loading for businesses. The Gulf Horse does have deliveries that deliver right off of French Prairie. We'll evaluate each alternative in terms of cost and making sure that whatever we put forward is supported by the community.
As much as we can, okay? We realize that there are some conflicting interests already. We've, we've learned that. So, but we're going to do our best to find some common ground and find something that we feel like the Charbonneau community can get their arms around.
So our next steps, we are in the alternative development phase. We're going to be putting forward a number of alternatives to the community, trying to get, put out a survey along with that and get feedback on what our alternatives look like to them. We have an intention to put out a pilot project, coning off parts of the roadway and making it available for, for bikes and pets, and get the community to get a feel for what that might, might impact them, how that's going to work, and then develop some, get some feedback from that alternative as well. And then from all this community input, we're going to put forward our preferred plan and make a report that pushes it forward as a possible capital improvement project.
And there, I think one of the major controversies is using, repurposing the lanes in Charbonneau. As you probably know, there's two lanes in both directions, and that seems to be a major conflict of, don't take away our lanes, use our, do repurpose our lanes, or do it some places but not in others. So this is a challenge for us, but we feel like this little test pilot project will, it's an opportunity to just test what it would be, feel like to use part of one of the lanes or all of one of the lanes to, to accommodate the needs of the people that are walking in the road today. And also the rest of the pathway, unfortunately, it's not very wide, it's got all kinds of trip hazards, it's steep. I talked to one woman that she doesn't take walks on the path because she, her friend won't, they won't take walks there because they're in a wheelchair, she's in a wheelchair, and her friend can't push her on the path. So it's, it's, it's actually an interesting project to work on because I feel like we're going to provide a service to the community in a really good way when we're finished. Yeah, any questions? I guess I better keep going here, huh? This is a, this is a map of the Charbonneau, obviously with, it shows where the path is and where it's not, and anybody who's walked out there is familiar with the situation.
That, what a great presentation. Thank you. I, I'm curious about the pilot program. Or can you kind of point out on this map where you're thinking that might go?
We haven't come to a decision yet.
Pilot would be tied to the alternatives, right?
It would be tied to the alternatives.
Yeah, so you haven't developed those yet?
No. We're in the process.
Yeah. But we feel like it's an opportunity to test. If, if one of the alternatives turns out to be using part of a lane or all of a lane, wherever it might be, it's a good way to test it and see. What we wouldn't want to do is propose it, recommend it, adopt it, design it, construct it, and then it's a flop. So it's a good way to test it and get the community to get a feel for what it's like.
It's kind of the same way that when architects build like a college campus, they don't put in sidewalks, they wait to see where people are walking, and then they put the sidewalks in. Same concept.
I have a comment. Thank you both, not only for tonight's presentation, but the entire team has been wonderful in all the work in Charbonneau. For the record, of course, I live in Charbonneau. Nancy, you said it quite clearly, it's a complicated group of folks out there in Charbonneau. They love their community, they love their tree-lined French Prairie, and they have some opinions, but then they also want to be safe and be able to use their, their, their roadway in a manner that, that they're using it now, but it's not safe at all. Another piece that you're doing now in collecting information is the poster boards that are in the library in the activity center, which is just another, I see a lot of people gathering around that during the day and, and talking about the different ideas or the different challenges, and then hopefully there, I see some people putting there, filling out the little cards. But it's just been wonderful working with you, with Zach and the full team, because I believe Charbonneau people really appreciate the, the comprehensiveness of the project even thus far. And so I believe there's a trust of, whatever you come up with for ideas, they're willing to listen. At least that's what I'm promoting, so.
That's good.
They better get on board with me.
It's unfortunate that when Charbonneau was developed, that they didn't do, didn't have our today's public work standards for roadways. This is really a collector, a major collector.
Or sewer, or water.
Oh, well, let's not go there. But, you know, these days, we make sure there's sidewalks and bike facilities and they're ADA compliant on our projects, and, you know, this was just built at a time when that wasn't, it wasn't in the, in the forefront, and so hopefully we can improve it.
Yeah. The interesting thing is though that our utilities are all underground, which is so interesting for something built in the middle, middle 19, early 1970s. So the utilities are underground, including all the telephone and electricity, but we just don't have the sidewalks and the safe traversing about. But nevertheless, it's been a pleasure working with you, and we continue to look forward to new ideas. I, I really like the idea of the pilot areas, however those might be, and there might be several of them. I think it's important for the Charbonneau community to know that whatever is proposed and whatever they like or may, may like or may not like, still has to come back to our council, of course, for approval. So, and I, and I've heard from a few Charbonneau folks who think, well, the city's just going to decide and they're going to do it. And I've been trying to tell them, no, the city isn't going to decide, they're going to base it on the feedback of the residents. So that'll be, continue to be my, my message to the community as we work through this process. Thank you.
I have a couple of concerns and a comment and a, two questions. First of all, my comment is that if the city's taking responsibility of this, for this, and taking an active role, I don't believe pedestrians and cars ever mix. And doing anything less than, you know, putting bollards or Jersey barriers in place if you're even exploring, sharing traffic lanes, all it takes is one person on a cell phone. All it takes is a text message coming in at the wrong moment, or somebody looking at their screen on their phone, and they're bam, and they're hitting a pedestrian. The vulnerability is huge. So I, I, I am concerned that if we're looking at a shared lane where there's actual traffic, that we're very cognizant of the risks to the city. And Zach, thank you for nodding to that. Regardless of, you know, the safety, safety comes first.
Of course.
And then regarding ADA compliance, is, is, is this project going to, the build of this going to make sure that we meet ADA, or is it an aspirational ADA compliance?
Anything that we construct will have to be ADA compliant.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. And then finally, last question, are there, will there and are there restrictions on motorized golf carts on that pathway?
I believe that they're allowed, that's what the sign says.
Yeah, so we're, we're envisioning a separation of cars and golf carts, or we're trying to figure out what accommodation we can make for golf carts within that mix.
Another person, another thing to consider.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, because the golf carts can be on the roadway, correct, in Charbonneau?
Well, that's what the sign says. I wasn't here when that was approved.
Don't look at me. I didn't have a golf cart when I lived there, so.
So if golf carts, if, yeah, I would say that, again, they are allowed. I, I would actually ask that that be revisited from a safety concern, particularly when you mentioned, and I really keyed on the fact that you said there was a woman who said that she can't, you know, a person in a wheelchair. When we've got individuals with disabilities, that does become a concern. Golf carts can go pretty darn fast. They so can bicycles, but they're smaller.
Yes.
But golf carts, I would not, I would not want to get hit by a golf cart. So, thank you.
Comment, I'd like to make a comment about golf carts. All the golf carts in Charbonneau all have a resistor or a governor on them, they can't go over 19, 20 miles an hour, so we can't go any faster than the slowest car, typical speed limit. They can be very dangerous. I had a friend whose mother, not in Charbonneau, but in another area that I lived, was unfortunately killed by getting hit by a golf cart.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to get hit by a 20 mile an hour car.
But nevertheless, we don't want to tell the people in Charbonneau they can't drive their golf carts on the road, but.
But could we have them driving not on the path?
They're not driving on the path now.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Will they be restricted from driving on the path? That was my question.
We don't have that answer yet either.
I mean, logically speaking, you would want to remove motorized traffic from non-motorized.
Thank you. Perfect.
The answer to your question is we shall endeavor to make sure that happens, but I don't want to preclude any options that they may be looking at. I can't imagine they would be looking to mix golf carts and walkers, but maybe.
Yeah, I mean, golf carts on the road, yeah. A lot of communities do that, right? Retirement communities and things like that, but golf carts on a pathway that's not that wide, different. And so that was actually my question, so I'm sorry if I confused you.
That's okay.
That makes a lot of sense. I would not want to be walking with my dog with them, especially when they sneak up behind you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, the work session is adjourned at 5:47 PM. The city council will meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602F exempt public records and ORS 1926602H legal counsel litigation to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers. We'll take a five-minute break, we'll reconvene at 5:55. I call to order the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for May 5, 2025 at 7 PM. The city recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Chevlin?
Present.
Counsel President Berry?
Here.
Counselor Cunningham?
Here.
Counselor Dunwell?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel President Berry, can I have a motion to approve the falling order of agenda as amended in the work session, which moves Resolution Number 3186 to new business?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the falling order of agenda has been made, and second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Welcome, everyone. Happy Cinco de Mayo. Thank you for joining me tonight in the city we all love for my first State of the City address. I've been mayor for a mere four months, so I asked staff for a bit of guidance about these State of the City addresses, and they told me I can make it whatever I want. So immediately I thought, great, this will be short. So immediately, I thought, great, this will be short. However, I did a little digging and learned that the shortest State of the City ever in Willesville was about eleven minutes. Tempting, very tempting. Shockingly, the longest was well over an hour. Nobody needs that from me. So I promised to land somewhere in the middle, long enough to review where we are, but short enough to keep you from checking your phone too often. It is an honor to have been elected Willesville's 10th mayor. This city has been home to my family for more than seventeen years. We've invested in our home and business here. We are raising our son here. And like many of you, we care deeply about protecting the things that make Willesville extraordinary, as we plan and move forward with intention and heart for our families and their futures here. As we begin, I want to recognize some wonderful people in this room tonight. Let's start with my colleagues on the City Council. Counsel President Carolyn Berry. Where'd she go? She's in the back. Counselor Katie Dunwell, right here. Counselor Adam Cunningham. And Counselor Ann Shevlin. This is truly a team of thoughtful and dedicated public servants. I may have the podium tonight, but I could tell you that most everything we do, we do together. Thank you, counselors. I also want to acknowledge the leadership that came before us. Present tonight are former mayors Tim Knapp, Julie Fitzgerald, and is former Counselor President Archivall here? No. And former Counselor Joanne Linville. Is she back there? Your tenure has planted the many seeds that we now enjoy as a city. Thank you, visionary leaders. And to our elected officials here tonight in spirit, Senator Aaron Woods and Representative Courtney Neuron. She may not be here this evening, but she said she might be here. So I'll just give her that acknowledgement. Thank you for your collaboration and hard work on behalf of our city, region, and state. To our city manager, Brian Cosgrove, our city attorney, Amanda Gill Hinman, and our phenomenal city staff, to our law enforcement led by Police Chief Rob Warps, and to our first responders from Twalden Valley Fire and Rescue led by Fire Chief Derek Weiss, thank you for being the hearts, minds, and hardworking hands of our city. Let's give them a round of applause. To our many volunteer board and commission members, to the Willesville Area Chamber of Commerce led by its CEO, Kevin O'Malley, and to every neighbor in this room, thank you. Showing up matters, and your presence tonight demonstrates that you care. And finally, to my wife Yumi and our son Tenzin, who's at home watching on YouTube. You are my greatest joy and my fiercest supporters. I know this journey has been challenging, but your love and sacrifice has been the foundation for everything I do. I love you and thank you. Yumi and I came to Willesville in 2008. We were like so many of you, youngish, ambitious, and just trying to make life work. She had a job up in Portland. I was commuting down to Salem and Willesville, perfectly inconvenient for both of us. A true marital compromise. Those first few years, we were in constant state of go. It felt like we only really lived in Willesville on the weekends. But even in those brief windows, we saw something here. Something special that vested both Portland and Salem. A community that was peaceful, walkable, with a nice variety of local restaurants for the time. Some of our favorites owned and operated by folks from historically marginalized cultures. We loved it. But we also knew it could be more. More inclusive, more diverse, more connected. And over time, we've watched that vision begin to take root. When our son Tenzin was born in 2011, everything changed for us. Suddenly, we weren't only considering commutes. When thinking about livability, we were now also thinking about childcare, school quality, convenient parks, safe streets, and a sense of belonging for our family. We became vested in our city and community's future. I opened my law firm here in Willesville to be closer to home. I had encouragement from former city attorney Michael Kohoff, who had opened his business, his firm, years ago. And I had a lot of help from other local small business owners, especially other parents who knew the juggle of building a business while raising a family. We kept each other going. The Chamber of Commerce played a key role as well. Willesville's small businesses are not just an important economic driver for us all. They are in many ways the soul of this city. Supported by great organizations like the Willesville Rotary Club, they volunteer, sponsor our sports teams and student groups. They show up for our events. They reinvest in our future. As mayor, I want to make sure our local small businesses are supported and appreciated. Of course, the other essential economic driver for our community is our many innovative industries and large employers that operate in Willesville. These, along with institutions like the Oregon Institute of Technology and Clackamas Community College, allow our community to continually punch above its weight, offering opportunity and prosperity for everyone. In 2014, when my son was about to start public school, I discovered that his primary school was located next to an old petroleum pipeline owned by Kinder Morgan, an energy infrastructure conglomerate. At that time, middle school children next door were being evacuated on top of the pipeline during earthquake drills. And many local leaders were unaware of the pipeline's existence or the associated risks. Some residents, excuse me, some residents did not realize it was in their backyards. Many had either never known or had forgotten the tragic 1999 Olympic pipeline rupture in Bellingham, Washington, where three children lost their lives. That pipeline in Washington was the same age as the Kinder Morgan pipeline we have in our community. At the time, Kinder Morgan and the federal government claimed there were no safety concerns. Out of concern for our children, I tried to educate our community and city leaders. The Willesville spokesman, reporting over the years, was critical in helping with this process. And as an aside, the Willesville spokesman is a vital institution that safeguards the First Amendment at the local level. It reports on the issues that matter most to our community and ensures that public institutions are held accountable. We should all have subscription. Back to the pipeline. Beginning in 2019, with the encouragement of our community, city staff, Mayor Snapp, and Mayor Fitzgerald, along with Representative Neuron collectively put pressure on Kinder Morgan and the federal government to take action. Fast forward today, thanks to the relentless efforts of our community and its leaders, Kinder Morgan has been ordered by the federal government to make repairs and enhance the overall safety of this sixty-four-year-old pipeline. You can now see this vital work taking place in our community today. We must remain vigilant and, as a community, continue to advocate for Kinder Morgan to improve and maintain the safety of the pipeline and keeping us informed. N S, our school district has assured me that our children are no longer evacuated on top of the pipeline during earthquake drills. Excuse me. That's a lot of work here. And while I wouldn't recommend pipeline safety advocacy as a relaxing hobby, it did teach me a lot about our community resolve. It is the unwavering support and strong community relationships we've built over the years that I carry with me today. This support is crucial now more than ever as we advocate for the federal government and the state of Oregon to expedite full funding for the replacement of the Boone Bridge, which divides our city. We must ensure that this bridge is seismically sound to withstand a cascadeous subdution zone earthquake and provides additional lanes to alleviate traffic congestion. We, all of us, can achieve this together. Representative Courtney Neuron, Congresswoman Andrea Salinas, Senator Jeff Merkley, and many of our regional leaders are actively supporting this effort. As a community, we must continue to communicate directly with them about this critical need. We all have to do it. We all have to do it. Of course, much has changed since my family moved here in 2008, and for the better by most measures. Our inviting parks and trails, our varied and livable neighborhoods have been designed with community in mind. As I visit neighborhoods, I see diverse residents who all seem to appreciate what our city offers, a stronger sense of belonging. That's no accident. That is a result of years of advocacy, empathy, and intentional leadership, both by our elected and our community. Willesville is a city of belonging for all, for our seniors, for people of color, or those historically marginalized, for LGBTQ plus community members, for our neighbors with disabilities, our veterans. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is not just a tagline, it's our North Star. And if you need examples, simply consider the diverse occasions our city has hosted or celebrated this past year, such as the grand opening of our new disability-inclusive playground at Boones Ferry Park. Here's a brief tour of that park if you haven't had a chance to visit in person.
Hi, I'm Zach Morse from the Willesville Parks Department. Decided to be here to talk through Boones Ferry Park. It opened in September of 2024. And this truly is our first inclusive playground. As you can see behind me, it's our first fully fenced-in playground, which is great for the safety of the kids as well as the ease of mind for the caregivers. We have many different universal features, such as the Inclusive Orbit Spinner, where a wheelchair can roll up on and enjoy that spinning motion. We have swing bays at the far end of the playground with ADA swing and a companion swing where a caregiver can swing back and forth with an individual. There are many different interpretive bilingual bike channels scattered throughout the play space. And I really want to highlight this Rev 8 spinner right here, which can actually hold up to twenty-five individuals at a time. We do have a movement game where a wheelchair can roll up on. It's kind of like the old-school Simon Says game. Pretty cool. As you can see, we have turf surfacing, great for ADA access, as most of our parks have engineered wood fiber.
I'm Katie May, and I live in Villeboise. And we used Boones Ferry Park a lot over the winter because there's a lot of parks nearby us, but this one was turf. And every time we came, even on like a cloudy or rainy day, my kids could always find somebody to play with, which is invaluable.
If you haven't been out here to check out Boones Ferry Playground, please do so. We foresee it being very, very busy throughout the summer months. Thanks.
My only regret about that, Representative Neuron has arrived. I didn't see. Hi. The only regret I have about that park, it opened when my, now my kid is too old to enjoy it. We got the old one, so. Willesville also renewed its sister city exchange with Kitakata Japan. We observed this past year the Korean War Interpretive Center opening attended by many veterans and dignitaries, including Governor Kotek. We also honored those who served at Veterans Day and Memorial Day ceremonies. We had fun with the always-popular community Easter egg hunt. We embraced our LGBTQ plus friends and neighbors with a pride celebration and beautiful mural. We celebrated Juneteenth with music and guest speakers. We brought families together for National Night Out and Party in the Park. We congratulated our high school scholastic and athletic champions. We hosted Willesville's annual Christmas tree lighting, photos with Santa, community caroling, and Christmas stocking donations for homebound seniors. We enjoyed a Las Pasada celebration, and we observed Willesville's first-ever menorah lighting. We enjoyed a Ramadan community potluck. And during this time, members of the Muslim Community Center collected hygiene products throughout the month to support Willesville Community Sharing, one of our key nonprofits in our community. We celebrated Lunar New Year with traditional Chinese performances and crafts for kids. And most recently, we hosted a standing-room-only multicultural dance presentation at McMinimum's Old Church featuring Japanese, Indian, and Indigenous dance groups. Here are a few highlights from that lovely day. These cultural events are hugely popular with community members, and there's something for everyone, even a bingo night fundraiser benefiting our senior community center. Just this past week, Willesville unveiled an amazing citywide Hearts of Willesville installation by a dozen local artists. Here is a wonderful video about the hearts.
We are at Willesville High School, and we are in the Fine Arts Department. I am with our lovely National Art Honor Society artists. You see behind me working away on our public art piece. This public art project sponsored by the City of Willesville, Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, created this project called "Many Hearts, One Culture", the Hearts of Willesville Project. And so I decided to apply as the art teacher at Willesville High School. I wanted to have my National Art Honor Society students participate in this incredible opportunity. Personally, I think it is just about kind of making Willesville a little bit more beautiful. Kind of similar to the tile work we have under the bridge on Boones Ferry Road, just kind of creating beauty and nature into our town. So the inspiration for this design came from my Latino Art and Culture class. My students were studying the embroidery on the dresses from women in Mexico, specifically De Juana Peck in Mexico, which is in Oaxaca. We decided that we were going to attempt to paint the flowers and have them resemble the embroidery.
I've been a part of this club since freshman year, and the impact and art I've been able to make for the community in this has made me feel wonderful. I think it just shows how much our art education system is just teaching us and giving all of our students these great skills that they can further use, even if they're not going to pursue art.
It gives me such great joy knowing that this is something that my students and I have created together and that it's something that the community can. have created together, and that it's something that the community can directly see coming out of Wilsonville High School. It's something tangible, it's something positive, and I think it's something very affirming of our wonderful education system that we are so privileged to have here in Wilsonville.
We have a lot going on here. Last Saturday, we experienced a remarkable event titled "Turning Darkness Into Light", commemorating the 30th anniversary of Damish Hospital's closure. This mental health fair featured outstanding speakers, captivating entertainment, delicious food, and a wide array of mental health support resources. These aren't just social activities, they are chapters in the collective Wilsonville story that show respect and support for our diverse communities. We all should be proud of our city. Now let's talk about a few infrastructure accomplishments. Since last year, we've accomplished a lot. We completed a state-of-the-art public works complex to improve efficiency, responsiveness, and emergency preparedness for key departments essential to the safe and smooth operation of our city. We are almost finished building a 3 million gallon West Side water reservoir because hydration is lifeline infrastructure. This will provide a critical resource in the event of an emergency, making our community resilient and ready for the future. We're also investing in our future with a new sewer interceptor to support new neighborhoods east of Stafford Road in Frog Pond. These projects may not be high visibility, but they are impressive accomplishments that will give our community a huge advantage and reward all community members for this investment. And Beckman Road, it's almost back. Right? No more hazardous Beckman dip. Drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians alike will soon enjoy safer access with a seismically sound bridge and leveled street grade, a new roundabout to keep traffic flowing, wider sidewalks, and dedicated bike lanes, concealed utilities, and even a restored creek habitat for our wildlife. Safe, efficient, and access for all, that's how Wilsonville rolls. The Voila residential development is also nearing completion: 121-unit complex adjacent to the Wilsonville Transit Center, with rent starting around $539 a month. This much anticipated and sorely needed affordable housing provides economic stability and opportunity to our community, and because these homes are conveniently located next to our transit center, Voila residents can connect to jobs while building a future as part of our community. It's the progress cities can, should, and must deliver. And Wilsonville... I just want to add, and Wilsonville's getting it done. We're also moving forward on the Town Center Plan, a long-term vision to replace outdated and vacant big-box retail buildings with sustainable retail, affordable modern homes, plus community amenities our community members have made abundantly clear. They expect Wilsonville leaders to deliver, so our Town Center can be active, attractive, This kind of transformation obviously takes time and financial investment, but we are planning now on how best to proceed. Let's talk about the challenging road ahead. Like every municipality these days, we are closely monitoring external economic and political turbulence and its impact on funding for critical infrastructure, such as the replacement of the Boone Bridge, likely cost increases due to tariffs on technology and supplies that will impact city budgets and services, and disruption of supply chains that may impact timelines on project completion and city services for our residents. Additionally, we must prepare for a transition of city administration leadership as longtime employees retire. Community Director Chris Nimsu retired last month, Government and Public Affairs Director Mark Otnot will retire this month, and City Manager Brian Cosgrove will retire at the end of the year. Much of what we enjoy today was implemented by these dedicated individuals with guidance from our civic leaders and community. As mayor, I am honored that during my first State of the City address and their last, I can acknowledge their service to our community. They have left their successors a clear map, and I anticipate a smooth transition thanks to their expertise and professionalism. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay. Just want to make sure he gets noticed there. Given all this, the City Council has organized progress in four broad areas. First, under the umbrella of public health, safety, and welfare, the council has identified the following goals: Streamlining response to code enforcement difficulties reported by community members. Evaluating and updating our public nuisance code. Exploring rental inspection program, including funding for such a program. Expanding much-needed on-the-ground mental health resources to support our community. Second, the council focus will be on the current and future fiscal health of the city's operating funds, including these financial goals. Exploring efficiencies, cost savings, and alternative revenue options. Future-proofing revenues and avoiding further large rate spikes in the sewer, water, and stormwater, funds by indexing these utilities to a CIP index. Third, council will focus on ways that the city can continue to build trust through communication and community engagement with the following goals: Engaging the community on urban renewal and infrastructure funding sources. Creating a Town Center communication and engagement strategy to help inform council decisions. Evaluating and improving online engagement to expand community interactions. Fourth, to ensure that the current quality of parks' maintenance is provided for the long term, as our parks' portfolio grows with an additional 30 acres of maintenance responsibility coming online in the next couple of years. The goal is to retain existing levels of service after expansion by identifying potential cost savings and new revenue opportunities. I look forward to working with my colleagues on council to achieve those goals. Need a break, guys. I think we're still less than an hour. And not too many phone-looking. Thirty-seven years ago, when I first arrived in Oregon, I was introduced to something folks called back then "the Oregon Way." It was more than just a phrase, it was a way of life, one grounded in collaboration, respect, and finding common ground over partisanship. It was a time when neighbors said good morning not out of habit, but out of genuine respect. A time when people could disagree without being disagreeable, when communications meant not just speaking, but listening, truly listening. Much has changed since then. The digital age has sped things up and sometimes drowned things out. But I believe the spirit of the Oregon Way matters now more than ever, because it's not about who's right or wrong, it's about mutual respect, shared ideas, and working together to move our community forward. That, to me, should be the Wilsonville Way. Let's carry that spirit forward, not just for ourselves, but for the next generation. We've accomplished so much together, but the future will ask even more of us, and I believe we're ready. By building on our progress, facing challenges with resolve, and creating opportunity for all, we can ensure Wilsonville continues to thrive. I'm genuinely excited for what lies ahead. This city, that my family has lived here for 17-plus years, is a living example of what's possible when led with innovation, inclusivity, and heart. I look forward to working alongside our city council, our incredible staff, our passionate volunteers, and each and every one of you as we move forward together with purpose and optimism. Together, we'll ensure Wilsonville remains a vibrant, welcoming city that future generations will be proud to call home. Thank you for being here tonight and watching me sweat. Thank you for believing in this city, and thank you for being a part of Wilsonville's future. Thank you. So I invite you to enjoy a special performance by the Wilsonville Choir, one of our many local, active local groups that enrich our community and bring us closer together. And we're going to have 15 minutes in a reception, and there's a lot of great cookies over there. Adjourned for 15 minutes. City Council is back in... meeting is back in session at 8:02 PM. And since there's no communications, we're going to move to citizen input and community announcements. All right, okay. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter... wait a minute, stop. Sorry. I want to apologize, folks, that there was a leader in the room that I did not see, and out of nerves, and being the first, I totally screwed it up. But Mayor Ludlow was here, and I want us to give him the respect. I'm sorry, Mayor Ludlow. And if anybody else, I forgot, you know, I'm sorry too. So we'll move now to community input and announcements portion of the city council agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also the time to address items not on the agenda. It is also time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You'll need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address or state that your address is provided on the speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You're welcome to submit information in writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other councillors to discuss your concerns further. There's only one thing that I want to add. Someone came up to me and said, "Well, why don't you... why won't you comment, Mayor?" After someone makes a comment or raises a good point. So here's my dilemma for this member of council. If I take the time to comment on one person that's come before the city council and I ignore everybody else's, it's unfair for those people that are brave enough to stand up there for three minutes. So I honor everybody's input, but I am not commenting because it deprives everybody my weight. I'd rather listen. That does not limit you from coming and reaching out to me to meet me privately, and many of you have, and I'll continue to do that, but that's why I don't comment. Okay? With that... John Ludlow.
Wow, yeah, I got applause. I haven't had that in so long.
We're going to allow you to stay... oh, you can go there, that's okay.
I thought she said I could.
Oh, okay, okay. I did not know that.
I want to save that applause and use it later, if I can then. Hey, yeah, I've been here for 50 years, and I was lucky enough to participate in the first general plan for the city of Wilsonville. And the majority of people, and by the way, this is not partisan, these were all just locals, hell, we had 1,100 people living here, wasn't that a bigger thing? But almost every one of them that was at those planning meetings said, "We don't want to look like Beaverton." How do we do? I mean, it looks just like Beaverton, and what's worse is the traffic that goes with it. One other thing about... my nose, I can't even read them. The most exciting thing in town was a four-way stop sign at Boones Ferry and Wilsonville Road. And then when Rite Aid, well, it was Payless Warehouse came in down there, the city made them put up a four-way flashing light. That was exciting. There were people that take their lawn chairs down there just to watch that, I swear. And, you know, I'm here tonight to talk about neighborhood parking. The city does not think through their decisions on the amount of parking required per unit. And by the way, this transcends when the state got involved in. We're talking 20-plus years ago. They never really thought it out. Here's an example. The city owns Creek Side Woods, you guessed it, built with urban renewal dollars. That facility was built to relocate residents displaced from the Thunderbird Mobile Club, where Jory Trail is, et cetera, right now. And by the way, it happened so many years later that maybe two or three people ever got to relocate over there. The city figured that more aged people would not need or want cars, they were wrong. Too many people had two cars, two-person occupants, and even the single ones, most of them had cars. So they had too many cars, so they had to convert other property they had to more parking to accommodate the reality of people and their automobiles. Land's so expensive now that developers don't have the opportunity to add more land for parking purposes after their development is completed. Besides that, the city approves a developer's inadequate parking plans, and the developer gets to walk away from the problem and is left to the neighborhoods to deal with. Some single-family developers in Wilsonville have been overrun, and they are being overrun the evening. If you don't believe it, get up at 6 o'clock and drive the neighborhoods. You will see there isn't a parking place, and there's a war to get them. And we're not talking about people who live in those houses that those cars are parked in front of, we're talking about neighbors blocks away in apartments. So when the city approves a multiple-unit residential facility, then the neighborhood inherits the parking spillage, the parkage collapse. How will the city resolve this dilemma? Not by allowing less parking spaces per unit bill or relying on residents to suddenly love spending more of their time on the bus, whether it's free, but not to our businesses or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Where's my applause, darn it?
Mayor Pat Hensel.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, councillors, city staff, and all those gathered here and online. My name is Mary Pat Hensel. I live at 31518 Southwest Wildwood Court in Maury's Landing in Wilsonville. I'm a wife, a mother, grandmother, friend, daughter, sister, survivor, gun owner, and a volunteer, and an advocate for public health. With these identities and passion comes firearm storage and awareness. As a survivor of gun violence, I want to share my message to keep others from having to live my experience. I am here to let you know about National Gun Violence Awareness Day on June 6th. I believe wearing orange provides a clear attention-getting tool in the woods when hunting or also along our local streets and walking paths. When I am in orange, I trust you will see me. And when I am in orange, I am truly empowered to share information with my neighbors to amplify this message. Across the country on June the 6th and through the weekend, 7th and 8th, city leaders will come together for proclamations and remembrances for nationwide gun violence. Together, we remember. My primary reason for being here is that together we also take the time to pause and value all lives and to build awareness in our neighborhoods, schools, faith communities, and families about gun violence which surrounds all of us. Oregon has a very high rate of firearm suicide. Data from EveryStat in October 2024 shows Oregon with a 77% suicide rate for the harm inflicted by firearms in 2023. This data is very important to me because my brother ended his life with a firearm in Pennsylvania. The family ripple effect of this life-altering act is real. Here in Oregon, taxpayers pay for these tragedies at $89.1 million per year. We must work together to lessen this issue here across the state and across the country. We must also work together to securely store firearms, and we can learn more about extreme risk protection by and for families and with the support of law enforcement. Let me recommend a program called Be Smart. Work with me. I will arrange for all leaders in Wilsonville, as well as other nearby communities in Clackamas County, to attend a session this summer. West Lynn and Lakoswiga have already come on board. Don't delay. I have a responsibility as a citizen in a great city to help people keep, to help the people around me stay safe. Watch for links that you can share when they come out in the June Messenger. Our city staff has been extremely helpful to me. Thanks to you all, I value this support. Wear orange on June 6th and through the first weekend of June. Take photos and post them with the hashtag #wearorange. Find me after this meeting if you want more specific information.
Mayor and council, I'm Doris Whaler, and my address is on file. I'm concerned about the future of our city. We are spending beyond our means, and our community will not see housing affordability if we do not have better financial planning. The city does not appear to be in a financial position to fund wastewater treatments. We have a $50 million project to replace the aging stormwater system at Charbonneau. Our constrained sewage treatment plant will need an upgrade due to age and increased population. At the last city council meeting, city staff suggested our sewer and stormwater rates must triple over the next decade to pay for upgrades, replacements, and future growth. Why did we have $15 million in cost overruns for the Beckman Bridge project? What happened to the millions received from our new water partners? We were told this money would be used to lower our water rates. However, I believe that millions were used to partially build the public services building. For many years, the city has been growing, and system development charges have covered a lot of expenses. But for the last four years, the population in Oregon has been static, and I, we are no longer in a housing boom, so our taxpayers will be on the hook. Every year, the city spends millions on consultants, primarily to fulfill state mandates. Because we have a transit system, we are forced into building more living units without much or any parking. Wilsonville needs more effective advocacy to fight against negative state rules. We need better financial planning. The skills and tenacity to get our spending under control will be important qualities as we consider candidates for the new city manager. The future of our city and the ability of families to afford living here depend on it.
Hi, my name is Kara Clark, and I have my address on the file that I handed you. I am running for the West Lynn Wilsonville School Board, and I wanted to come in and introduce myself to you and the community. I have spent almost every Monday night at the school board meetings, which are at the same time, so we've never, I've never had a chance to be here. But I want to talk a little bit about why I'm running for the school board and what brought me here. I have two kids who are serviced through the special education, and I learned the hard way. As a parent who just completely trusted the district, I thought that my kids were going to be taken care of, and I never thought about, I sent them on their way. And then when my kids came back and they weren't reading, and we had struggles in our family, and I couldn't understand what to do or how to help them, I found that, at the time, I couldn't get support through the school system, and the teachers didn't know what to do or what was happening as well. Both of my kids are dyslexic, and one is dysgraphic as well. And as I struggled with trying to find support systems, I also learned that I had to carry other people with me and start training the teachers and talking about it at school district meetings. And I spent the last two and a half years advocating at every school board meeting to change practices, to make sure that we are bringing in equitable literacy practices. And we adopted last year a structured literacy because parents had to come and show up every day to make sure that we are doing right for all of our kids. The basic needs of our students in the West Lynn Wilsonville School District is to be able to read, and we are currently now 50th in the country. We are, we have been failing. But I have hope, and I know how to continue to advocate to make sure we're putting the best practices in our school district. We can protect our children, and we can move forward to make sure that we are bringing the best of all of us and our teachers, and we can change the situation. So I now have a passion, and I am running for the West Lynn Wilsonville School Board, and I hope that you'll support me and you'll see me more often, but I'm grateful for your time. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor O'Neill, members of council. My name is Garrett Pryor. Pronouns are he and him. My address is on file on the card. It's happy to be here tonight. I've been on a journey the last few years with infertility and the chaotic born of a second child, so I've been away, but I'm looking forward to getting back and engaged. And I just wanted to show up here tonight to underscore some of the excellent things Mayor O'Neill said in his State of the City. First of all, diversity, equity, inclusion is not just a label. It is essential, like you said, Mayor, our North Star, to how we change and grow together. And so I strong fast in support and continuing that work. Our youth right now are under a health, safety, and achievement crisis, as our previous speaker said. And so I would implore you and encourage you to team up more with our school district, to look at how the, we can work together as a city and a school district to really serve what we know as our youth, who don't know these different separate areas of government but need resources, need things, especially for teens, to do in this community that are positive and engaging and free. And finally, this is sort of a massive pile, but our families are in need right now to hang on, really at almost all income levels. We have rising costs in transportation and housing, healthcare, childcare, and people are really just hanging on and trying to survive. So we need to take the steps that we've been on and double down on that. That means housing and jobs in places where they are planned for and needed most. That's completing the Center of Villebois, our town center, building upon, I would say we can even go further, upon the transit-oriented development that's happening at the Transit Center. We have land there. Partnering with the Community College, our, my dear friend, our recent Senator Aaron Woods, had talked about that and had visions for how the Community College could play a bigger role in workforce training, job growth, but possibly even housing and other kind of development on its campus. We need to continue, what I saw under Mayor Fitzgerald was desiloing the walls between government and our faith community with our social service approach to mental health. I think the work the people at the heart of the city are doing are just absolutely wonderful, and so just continuing to kind of work for those partnerships. And finally, we have a world-class Dwight Brashir Smart Transit Agency here, so continuing to double down on what they can do here, but also knowing that if we're going to add this housing here, we need connections to job and housing, job centers around our region. And that's so it's, it's getting together with our advocates in Clackamas County and around the region to take a look at what does it need to get high-capacity transit. So the job centers in Washington, Clackamas County, around Gresham, up to Portland, down to Salem, that needs to be a part of our vision, and we need to advocate for that at the levels where it need to be, at the state and the region. And finally, I've just been reflecting on my friend and co-chair of the Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Community, Aaron Woods, and what he taught me as leader was to connect. And so I hope that as you all, as leaders, use your platform to find the good people working and connect, 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 and we can do this together. Thank you.
My name is Tim Knapp. I have lived here since 1986, and I was also elected for more than a couple of years. I wanted to kind of address the concepts of urban renewal a little bit. I guess I would start by saying to each person listening, do you drive on Wilsonville Road? Do you ever use Memorial Park? Do you drive on Boone's Ferry? Canyon Creek Road North? Do you drive on Courtside Drive ever? Beckman Road? All of those you're able to drive on because of urban renewal improvements. Do you use our park system? Do you ever take your kids to Marassi Plaza on the fountain there? Do you go to Town Center Park? You know, each of those is what they are today because of urban renewal. We've partnered in the past with different affected agencies. Do you ever use the Wilsonville High School Gymnasium? Do you ever use the girls' high school field that was improved by urban renewal? Do you ever go on and see the underpass improvements on Wilsonville Road under the freeway? Each of those has benefited from urban renewal. The fact that we're sitting here in City Hall wouldn't exist without urban renewal, this building and where you are now. Creekside Woods senior housing wouldn't exist. Oh, by the way, do you ever flush your toilet? Because the sewer plant was somewhat paid for by urban renewal. All of these amenities are part of our urban renewal history. We have had multiple districts. Those districts that are closed, the Year 2000 Plan being one of the early ones, the increase from invested dollars was over 800%. That's like taking $10 and putting in there and coming out with $80 when you're done. Given the shortages that I've heard referred to here tonight, wouldn't it make sense to use a mechanism that allows you to increase your return by 800%? The West Side Plan where Villebois is, we worked to deal with the Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue to do sprinkling of all those residential units there. All of that with urban renewal dollars. That benefited the Fire District and received their support as an urban renewal project. The West Side Plan, when it was closed, increased 118 times. For each $1 that the urban renewal plan invested, the assessed value went up by 118 times. So it's a fiscally responsible thing to do, to consider this plan and ways to use it. And I encourage you to look at the data that backs that up and look at the history, and encourage you to give it a chance to be used in a continued, responsible way. Thank you.
Before we move on to councillor comments, I love doing this, I see scouts in the room. Can you all stand up? Who's the appointed leader that's going to answer some questions? No, I'm kidding. Welcome. Thanks for, thanks for showing up. Thanks for showing up.
To be honest, we were actually about to duck out. I'm so sorry. Have homework. But we are from Troops 194 and 5194, and they're working on communications merit badge and citizenship in the community. Thank you so much for always allowing us to be part of your meetings. We appreciate the support we get from the city.
Well, thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with council president Barry.
Thank you. This has been a really fun meeting. It's so nice to see everybody here. One of the activities that I did this week was attend the volunteer appreciation event. The mayor gave a speech. We got to hear some music. It was such a well-done, thoughtful event, and to recognize all the volunteers that helped make Wilsonville a really, truly wonderful committee, or community. I'm just so proud to be part of it, and thank you to the staff and everybody that put that event together, and thanks to all the volunteers. One of the things that I, well, the primary reason that I wanted Spock to talk tonight is that there's a new book, and it's called Growing Up in Wilsonville: The Boy Who Dreamed of Being a Steamboat Captain by Oliver. This is just hot off the press. It's published by the Wilsonville Historical Society. They've put in a lot of work in putting together this book. It started out because they received a grant from the Metro Funds, and they were able to transcribe all these tapes that they had interviewed previous citizens of Wilsonville. And then they dug up lots of photos, and then they put together a story about a little boy growing up in the early 1900s in Wilsonville. I think it's a really great book. They passed out a bunch of these books at the elementary schools. We're hoping that they'll be available at the library. If somebody's looking to make a connection to buy one, you can contact me, and I'll put you in the right direction to the people involved. Let's see, what else? It's just, it's such a great book that at the very end, they even have a little word puzzle where you can do key words about Wilsonville, including like the farms and Charlie Wilson and the Boone's Ferry fairies. Anyway, I recommend it to everybody. I've already bought two. So that's my, that's my present.
Councillor Dunwell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the State of the City address this evening. Appreciate the effort you put into it and the great stories that you told, so thank Recently, the, last week, met with the Willamette Intake Facility Commission. We're continuing We're continuing to look at making sure that we're maintaining everything going forward. It was a quite uneventful meeting and we're looking at budgets right now. I also on Saturday attended the Mental Health Fair. We were, there were so many great social service organizations that were representative, everywhere from NAMI, everyone from NAMI to Heart of the City to others. And I believe that it's, there was some great history that former Mayor Lehan spoke with about the history of Damish. And I think that it's one of the things that so many of the folks that live in Villebois are not aware that we have residents in our own community that are within some of the apartments and some of the independent living units within Wilsonville and within Villebois that are, have indirect ties to the days of the Damish State Hospital. It is an important service that we continue to provide to our citizens and that should never be forgotten. And I also attended very briefly and had an opportunity to visit with several of our volunteers at the beginning of the volunteer event last week. There are so many volunteers in our city and they do such great work. And, you know, getting to not only know them as volunteers, but also as citizens in our community and people who care. It reminds you about the heart of this city and it's always important to remember that, as I've said many, many times, to build bridges with each other as opposed to tearing them down. So I think that we find that when we all sit down and break bread or have cookies together or whatever it may be, that there is more in common with each other than there is differences. And then I had to leave early before the formal event, but that's because I got to go to something really, really cool at the public library. Again, part of what we do as a city. And it was, it was the showing of a movie. It was a documentary called Samurai in the Oregon Skies. And it's like a 45-minute documentary and it is about the only Japanese bombing in mainland United States during World War II. And it was specifically a bomb that was dropped in the Siskiyou Forest by a Japanese pilot. And it was near the town of Brookings. And his name was Nabuo Fujita. And what was really cool about it is it wasn't just about the bombing, it was about what happened afterwards. What happened was the city of Brookings then invited him back years later, back in the 60s. And he actually returned to Oregon and he started this amazing 35-year friendship that happened between us and them. Again, building bridges, moving away differences. And even though there were individuals in this city when they heard that he was being invited, they protested. They didn't like it. What are you doing? He bombed our city. I was, I served in the war and now you're bringing one of them over here. But what ended up happening is it actually became international news that he was coming over and those bridges began to be built. And citizens who were initially very much against it then started to become realizing how important it was when they all worked together. And so I'm going to say it again, building bridges is critical for us as a city. But I do want to add one more thing because we do have a member of our audience tonight, one of our citizens who actually spoke after the movie, and it's our former Mayor Fitzgerald, because she actually has personal experiences regarding that area and regarding all of that. So she's kind of our local expert on this. If you want to know anything about it, I'd say tag her after this because it is a really, really interesting time in the history of our city. So thank you all.
Councilor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep it short. On Saturday, I was able to attend the Mental Health Fair and was honored to be a speaker there, invited by my friend Abby Trauer, who put the whole thing together. She's an amazing events coordinator and she did a fantastic job with that. And she does a lot for our community. She was also Mrs. Wilsonville 2024. And she does so much for NAMI, Clackamas. She's a, she's a, I believe, a board member with NAMI Clackamas and does so much to support the community with that. And just a great person. But I was able to speak from a former first responders perspective and kind of share kind of the unique perspective of mental health as it relates to first responders and veterans, kind of a, oftentimes a kind of a closed community that doesn't really go out and speak too much publicly about what challenges people in those jobs face, although there are plenty. And so just a really good opportunity to kind of share that perspective and hopefully offer a perspective that some people may not understand about some of our first responders and what they face. So whenever you see them, give them a wave with all five fingers, even if they're a cop. I know the firefighters always get all five, so anyways.
Counselor Shetland.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for your State of the City address. It was very heartfelt. I believe you did a great job and I look forward to many more years of that. So it would be wonderful. And thank you all for attending and also for all those that were able to view the State of the City address online. Had a busy last couple of weeks. I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with some of the candidates for the Westland Wilsonville School Board and it was nice to see Ms. Clark here tonight. They're all very, very, very thoughtful and committed to the children in our community and to their schools. So wonderful, wonderful candidates. I was asked if I would endorse, consider endorsing one or more of the candidates because there are several different seats on the board that are available. Interestingly enough, I live in the community of Charbonneau, while that is part of the city of Wilsonville. Not everyone realizes that Charbonneau is in the Canby School District. So I don't feel quite right endorsing a candidate for someone I wouldn't be voting for. But I do have family, four grandchildren that live in the Westland Wilsonville School District. So I know they are watching the candidates closely and I'm pleased that there are some very, very good candidates for them to consider. I also attended the Wilsonville Volunteer Appreciation Event. And I learned that there are approximately 500, at any given time, 500 citizens that do volunteer work for our community. And there were a lot of them there at the high school the other night. So thank you to the staff for putting on such a great event. Hey, there's a new restaurant in town. It also happens to be in Charbonneau. It's called Lumiere, which means the light or a candle. And it's supposed to be on the theme of a little bit of a French restaurant, but I promise you, there's no escargot on the menu. So it's a great little restaurant. You know, we all love Luxe Cray. Many of us go over there and meet for coffee and meet a friend. Now there's another restaurant as well. So I encourage you to check it out. It's great to support our new businesses in town. I want to mention the Wilsonville at Charbonneau Music Festival that's coming up in August. I'm just starting to talk about it now. It's important for us to know about it because, two reasons. One, because the festival received a $10,000 grant from the city in order to get started. This is its inaugural year. And it's called the Blues for Schools, August 2nd and 3rd. And all of the profits for the event go to both the Canby and the Wilsonville Performing Arts Program. So there'll be more in the paper about it, a lot of advertising, but I'm just dropping a little plug here because it supports our schools, which are so important. Also, you'll be hearing more and more, but it's coming up just around the corner, is the Beckman Bridge ribbon cutting on May 21st at 4:30, I believe it is. My daughter and her family live right off of Beckman Creek in the Arbor Crossing neighborhood, right across from where the Frog Pond School is going in. So I'm down that street, I'm down at Beckman probably three times a week. And, you know, as those of us that drive it frequently, it's a mystery every day when you turn left off of Wilsonville Road. Okay, what side of the street am I driving on now? So get out there and come to the ribbon cutting, 4:30 on the bridge. It's beautiful. We're really excited about that. I've just got a couple of meetings coming up this week, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, and then I continue to meet with residents. I continue, I consider you my friends. Please reach out to me at my city email. We could meet up for a coffee. Maybe we could go to that new French restaurant and get to know one another. I want to hear what your thoughts are for the city, what your concerns are, what your dreams are. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Minutes of the April 21, 2025 City Council Meeting.
City Council President Barry, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Next is new business. And next up is adoption of council goals. Are we having?
Yes. On Zoom.
Can you hear us?
Oh, yes. Are you guys ready? Good evening. I'm Sarah Wilson with SSW Consulting. And I'm here to present to the council the final results of their 2025-2027 goal setting. Going to share my screen and take you through a few slides that will highlight the process that we used to develop the goals. And can you all see that screen? Oh, hold on. Make sure we have the right one. Okay. I'm going to take you through the process we used to develop the goals. And we'll just briefly walk through each goal and as well as the team commitment that was developed back in March. So we started this process, fortunate to work with the city a couple of years ago on their goals and working with the new council this year. They do this every two years. And we set out with some goals for this experience, first being team building. As a new team, you had members that needed to get to know each other because we want to be able to, you have a lot of work cut out for you, things that you heard during your campaigning and just a lot of community needs. And so the team building element is really important, not just amongst the council, but between council and staff so that you are able to be efficient and getting the work done and working together. We also did some work orienting to council roles, particularly the partnership that exists between council and staff. And then we spent time building a shared understanding of the community and the organizational context. Council heard from all of the departments, updates on work that is currently underway, things they have in the pipeline. We talked about political factors, the economic climate, organizational needs, community needs that have come up and used, built that, we built that shared understanding in order to help inform the goals that were set. And then finally, the last thing, the last objective we had during our work together in March was to develop goals and identify strategies that will guide the work of the council and the city organization. So that process, as I mentioned, we started with building that strong team foundation. We celebrated accomplishments. We considered that community and organizational context. And then everybody from the council had an opportunity to share their ideas, things that they were interested in advancing, things that they've heard from constituents. And then staff worked alongside the council to help them take those ideas and refine those into goals, really thinking forward about what are the outcomes? What are the things that we're trying to accomplish? And then following the workshop, we took all of that input and staff helped to identify the strategies that would be advancing those goals. And so that's what you have in your packet. I'll talk about the high-level goals and the outcomes that were defined for each of the four areas. And if there's any questions about the detailed strategies, I can pull those up as well. The first goal area was looking at how do we explore the outcome that the council desired, the outcome that the council shared was they want to explore cost savings and efficiencies and alternative revenue options for sustainable fiscal health. So really thinking long-term, how to maintain a healthy organization to provide services. And so there's a couple of key strategies in the goal document, looking at both the revenue side of things and doing analysis on what my, what revenue options could look like in the future, as well as cost-saving measures. So another strategy that would focus on the cost-saving piece. The second goal area, public safety. We have three different outcomes that the council is targeting over the next couple of years. The first one being to streamline response to code enforcement challenges. So there's a few strategies in there of being able to give the city the tools it needs to enhance its code enforcement work and be able to address some community issues. The second one is expanding on-the-ground mental health resources to support community. And then the third one is the evaluation of a rental inspection program. So recognizing that Wilsonville has quite a few rental units in the city and making sure that those continue to be really great places for people to live in the community by looking into a potential inspection program. The third goal area, parks. So knowing that there's some park land coming on the books, this upcoming expansion of approximately 30 acres, the challenge that lies ahead and it's identified here in this outcome is to make sure that you maintain the existing maintenance levels of service with that upcoming expansion. So making sure that folks in Wilsonville continue to enjoy really great parks at the level of service they currently see and not seeing a decline in that. The fourth and the last goal area is communications and engagement. So two outcomes identified here, first being that the community understands the Town Center Plan, urban renewal, and other funding sources for infrastructure through engagement to help inform the council's direction. So the council is going to be seeking additional input from the community to, on these topics to make sure that they understand what those desires are before making any decisions. And then the second outcome is to evaluate and improve online engagement tools to expand the audience and the reach. So we also talked about how do you keep the goals alive? And how do you make sure this isn't just a document or a list of things that sits on a shelf? And so we, in the document, in the goal report, you'll see that to maintain that accountability to the goals, the council can expect to receive quarterly updates on the goals and strategies. And that might be progress updates. It may be the, as the work begins on each of these strategies, success measures will be defined. And so it could be updates on what those success measures are, if there are any challenges that are raised as the work begins. And those quarterly updates may also identify areas that need additional clarification. So staff may be coming to council with some questions to make sure that everybody's on the right track. The other thing you can anticipate going forward is that in your staff reports, the staff will be calling out or highlighting for you which items are related to your council goals so that you can easily see when a council goal item is coming before you. And then as always, real-time updates to the council, whether that be in your conversations with staff or in any of the reports you receive or communications on an ongoing basis. As I started, the first outcome that we talked, or the first goal we talked about for this retreat was to do team building. And so we had some really good discussions about some team commitments. And those are detailed in the team commitment in your goal document. But just to highlight for folks listening in tonight, this council is really committed to doing this work together and being collaborative. And they've defined what these commitments are to them in their plan. But it's, they're going to do that through transparency, professionalism, collaboration, clarity, being prepared, and making sure they stay aligned with the city and the council's communication protocols. With that, I'll see if there are any questions or discussion that you'd like to have about any of the goals or the process.
Since we participated in it, I have no questions. Nope, no questions. Thank you.
Right.
So.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to assist the city with this.
Well, thank you for staying and waiting so long. We had you on, we're supposed to have you on earlier. We had you on, we were supposed to have you on earlier and my speech went a little long, so thank you. Okay. City Council President Barry, can I have a motion to approve the adoption of council goals?
I move to adopt the council goals.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to approve the adoption of council goals has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in, all in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Okay. Next up is discussion on Resolution Number 3186. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 3186, the resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with J-Ray Ads and PR Inc. for Explore Wilsonville Tourism Promotion and Development and Designation, Destination Marketing Services.
Okay, we'd invite staff to provide a staff report to council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Zoe Monburt from the Administration Department and the staff liaison to the Tourism Promotion Committee. As you'll recall, in work session, we spoke about the process that we went through and the recommendation from our Tourism Promotion Committee to extend a contract with J-Ray for upcoming tourism promotion services. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Before we take this to a vote, I would like to ask that we step back and ask council to agree to either work to amend the contract, to make it a single-year contract, or to, you know, revisit any option to extend it the additional two years as it's currently written.
No, I was just asking about protocols. I, so I think that what I, what I assumed was you needed a motion and a second to enter into discussion, but I'm being told by the parliamentarian that you can make a motion to amend, so.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend the, the current contract as stated, to remove, I think it's item number two, or is it item number three in the contract to, and remove the two-year extension.
To make it a.
So. To make it a single-year.
If you're, so it's a three-year contract with two one-year options. So it would be, so the motion to amend would be to change it from a three-year contract to a one-year.
Correct. That's what, that's what I'd like to propose.
And for council's consideration, I did have some time to think about this.
Can we get a second? Can we decide? There's going to be a second.
A second.
Okay. Wait. Okay.
Just before you vote.
Well, we have to have discussion.
Right. So I just want to put it on the table so when you're discussing, so this is just something important for your consideration, is you already have an out for this contract. So maybe the city attorney can go over what the severability clauses. When you get into that discussion, if you so, choose to move in that direction. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any discussion?
I understand that there's a severability clause. I don't know what the conditions of the severability are.
There is no conditions except prior notice.
So at any point, we could ask for, is it a 90-day, 60-day notice, 90 days?
Let me look it up real quick. I think it's 14 days or seven days. I can't.
Paragraph, oh, okay. It's section 14 and page 8 of the contract.
So at any point in time with 14 days' notice, are there any potential damages if we?
So what our contract states is that if we terminate for no cause, meaning that there isn't a breach of the contract, is we have to pay for any services up to the date of the termination, as long as there's no dispute over those, over those services performed. But otherwise, no, there's no damages. The other clause that I would just point out as well is that because we can't bind future councils, there's also an out if there's not appropriations made in a future budget cycle for those services. So there's two different ways that we handle a cancellation of the contract, either through the lack of budget appropriation or just an outright no-cause termination.
And no statement of damages?
Correct. And it is seven days. Sorry.
Seven days. Thank you, Brian, for the clarification and the further thought. Given that, I would like to retract my motion to amend.
Counselor Cunningham, can we get you on the record if you're comfortable with the, with that withdrawal, since you seconded it?
I am comfortable with that.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, okay. I think Counselor Cunningham, Counselor Dunwell made some very good thoughts, that we can still build in metrics of making sure that they're doing well in the contract to where we can have a good oversight and then bring it back and revisit, right? And then we can exercise that as something.
There's been a lot of dialogue between Counselor Dunwell and Zoe Monburt and the consultants, so I, you know, I'll let them speak to that.
I'd like to speak up on that too, actually. Counselor Barry, who is on, on that committee, actually approached me and, because it was just two of us, it could be a conversation. We, and she asked for additional, for me to outline for her additional data points that she would like to present to have reported on. So I believe that we're resolving that. And I've also had further conversations with Zoe. So I think it will reopen the dialogue with, with the agency to, just to make sure that we are truly, we are getting a true data-driven report and, and I'll just, you know, just say from my own personal experience for a moment, my background is a data analyst on digital media, that it's very easy for those reports to kind of go on autopilot. And I think that it's, that, it appears that J-Ray will be open to us really kind of asking, seeking to understand more of the questions from the data point, from the data points. So I think after my conversations with Zoe and my conversation with Counselor Barry, I'm good with where we're, where we're headed on that. So thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? City Council President Barry can have a motion to approve Resolution Number 3186.
I move that we approve Resolution 3186.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion to approve the following, wait, excuse me. The motion to approve Resolution Number 3186 has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. And with that, folks, at 8:57 PM, is there anything further from anybody?
I just wanted to let the council know that I, that our legal team will be at a conference Thursday and Friday, so we are available but may have delayed responses.
Free legal advice.
Absolutely not.
So we have to behave ourselves.
For the good of the order, we're adjourned at 8:57 PM.